Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting August 14th Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting to Order. Would you all please stand for the pledge?
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, by nation, by law, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hubbard. Commissioner Bradshaw.
Present.
Commissioner Helms.
Here.
Commissioner Barlow.
Here.
Commissioner Morse.
Here.
Chairperson Hassett.
Here.
Vice Chair Gillette. Commissioner Patillo.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Rugi.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Automated announcements.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have seventeen copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have seventeen copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
Items with the recommendation made by this Commission today will be heard at the Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday, September 3rd at 9:30 in this same room, with the exception of any continued items. Like to move on to approval of the minutes from the April 10th and May 8th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Martin, second by Gillette, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number one, Matthew Gunderson.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Before we start, just got a couple things. One, we have Melanie Stradling here. She's been here before as our addressing coordinator, and we actually have an addressing item on the agenda here today. But also, she has been promoted to a planner, so she will be here at these meetings moving forward. And then also, I just wanted to point out, you'll notice that our staff recommendations, we've had a change of wording. We were working with Supervisor Gould on this, and so rather than a recommendation of approval from staff, it'll be that staff finds that the application is proper for consideration and then subject to the conditions that we have added. So that is something that we have changed here on these items today and the change that you'll see going forward as well. Just wanted to point that out. And then for item number one, we have an evaluation of a request for an amendment to the Mojave County General Plan from a general commercial land use designation to a suburban development area land use designation and a rezone of assessors parcel numbers 402, 33, 145, 146, 147, and 148 from a C2H highway commercial zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for residential properties in the Beaver Dam vicinity. Staff finds that the application is proper for consideration, subject to the standard conditions.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak at this time? Nope. Okay, any others wanting? Well, there's no one signed up for this item, so I'll close the public hearing. Do any Commissioners have any questions for staff at this time?
Oh, but for the applicant.
They're not here. I mean, as much as we encourage them to be here, they're not here.
Um, I actually, I do have a...
Alright, so let's do this again. I'm opening the public hearing. Is the applicant present? Steven? Okay. This is number, this is item one.
Oh, it is.
Okay. Alright, Steven's not the applicant, so the applicant is not present at this time, but we do have some questions for them.
Alright.
You're good. Since there's no other individuals wanting to speak at this time, I will close the public hearing and open it up to Commissioners' questions. Go ahead.
Well, the applicant's not here to present their intentions.
Correct.
And number of units or anything related to housing.
I would be, you want to make a motion to continue this item in the next meeting and encourage the applicant's presence?
Yes, or a motion to deny.
Chairman Hassett, Commissioner Martin, just to clarify from a zoning standpoint, so the rezone is from C2H, which is a commercial zone, to AR, which is our agricultural residential zone, which is a single-family residential zoning district. So the zoning designation, as far as number of units allowed in that zoning designation, somebody would be allowed to have one primary residence and one accessory residence, but that would be the maximum they would be allowed with that zoning designation.
On the total of those parcels?
Yeah, Commissioner Hassett, Commissioner Martin, correct. So they're not proposing to split the properties at all, so each of the, each of those properties that they're rezoning is already just over an acre, and the agricultural residential zone has a one-acre minimum lot size. So they're basically changing each of those four lots from a commercial lot to a residential lot, and so yes, they'd be able to put a house on each of those lots with an accessory residence if they chose.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a question for staff, perhaps? Thank you. Appreciate. So when I look at this, it looks like that this Anasazi Drive, is that what it's called? Is a private drive? Is that, will that be ultimately transferred to public? How's, how does that? Looks like there's a kind of this, this cross between private-public as far as the access.
Yeah, Chairman Hassett, Commissioner Bradshaw, that is correct. So yeah, there is a public right-of-way of Anasazi that does turn private on the right-of-way map that is provided. You'll see it turns to red. We don't have any requirement for that to be turned into public. If this was a, if they were creating a subdivision, then through the subdivision process, they would be required to have, you know, paved legal access all the way through, but is this, there's no subdivision. We don't have any requirements for them to turn that access public. They just need to have that legal access, which it appears that they do.
Great, thank you.
Like to entertain a motion for this item.
I'd like to move that we adopt this, send this on to Planning Commission or the Board of Supervisors with standard conditions.
Okay. So a motion on the table from Commissioner Bradshaw, is there a second?
All second now.
Who wants it? Alright, second by Hubbard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Hearing none, motion carries. Item two, Alex Bolan.
Item two is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessors parcel number 40264079 from an RE 10A residential recreation 10-acre minimum lot size zone to an RE 1A residential recreation 1-acre minimum lot size zone to bring the property into compliance in the Beaver Dam vicinity. Staff finds the application is proper for consideration, subject to the standard conditions.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Okay, there's no one else that's signed up to speak on this item, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Do any Commissioners have questions for staff? Okay, with no, I'd like to entertain a motion for item two. First by Gillette, second?
Second.
Second by Martin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, Matthew Gunderson.
Item number three is an evaluation of a request for a rescission of Board of Supervisors Resolution 90-322 to revert the zoning designation for assessors parcel numbers 306, 31, 001B, 001D, and 001E to an AR 10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone for not meeting the conditions of approval in the Golden Valley vicinity. The Board of Supervisors resolution was approved for a rezone to a C2H 3A and an AR 5A zone. Vesting of that zoning was conditioned upon the property to be improved for the use which it was conditionally approved within one year. As of this date, the parcels have not been improved and the site remains vacant. Staff finds that the application for this resolution to be rescinded and for the zoning designation to be reverted to the previous AR 10A is proper for consideration.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Would you like to speak at this time, or does any Commissioners have questions for this applicant, for this individual? Could please silence that? I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you. Do Commissioners have any questions for this individual, or can we close the public hearing? No? Okay. Closing the public hearing, no Commissioners have questions for staff?
Um, I do have a clarification question if I could.
Commissioner Bradshaw?
Thank you. So item number three and item number four appear to be the same parcels, so maybe you can help us understand why we're doing a rescension and then a new zone change in...
Sure.
You could.
Yeah, Chairman Hassett, Commissioner Bradshaw, so the resolution that approved the rezone from 1990 specifies that, so it provides the conditions of approval, and then it states basically that if the conditions aren't met, that it needs to be brought back to the Board of Supervisors to either determine compliance or to be rescinded or to be extended. And so at this time, we have an applicant that's looking to, they came in looking to possibly develop, and so doing the history of the zoning on the parcel, we found that, hey, this is one where it was rezoned back in 1990, those conditions were never met, so this is kind of a way to clean up the books, get rid of that old resolution, and then the next item will be rezoning it again for them to be able to do the development that they're looking for.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions for staff on item three? Okay, looking for a motion on item three.
Motion to rescind for recommend...
First by Martin, second by Bradshaw, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, Matthew Gunderson.
Item four is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessors parcel number 30631001B, 001D, and 001E from an AR 10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone to a C2 general commercial zone and a C2H highway commercial zone to allow for commercial retail rentals and mini storage in the Golden Valley vicinity. The applicant is requesting that the parcel number ending in 001B to be rezoned to C2, which is general commercial. That's the property that does not have frontage on State Highway 68, and that the other two ending in 001D and 001E will be rezoned to C2H, which is our highway commercial zone because they do have that highway frontage. Staff finds that the application is proper for consideration, subject to the standard conditions.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? You want to come down?
Hi, my name is Andy Ralph, speaking on behalf of John Neely.
Address, please?
1125 North Lowell Road, Golden Valley, Arizona, 86413.
Thank you. There's no one else signed up to speak. Does any Commissioners have questions for the applicant at this time? Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Martin?
Is this the same applicant that we just rescinded the...
Correct.
Can you tell us what the holdup has been?
Uh, I believe he explained that that was an old from 1990, that's how it was zoned, so now we're moving forward with changing that to commercial zoning for the purpose of building businesses there.
But you're the same applicant from 1990?
No.
Oh, okay.
That's incorrect, yeah. Yeah, Mr. Neely purchased the property, I believe around 2003.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bradshaw?
Yes, thank you. So this, so I assume, tell me, can you kind of tell me what your intentions are as far as your, the layout, the, how you plan on utilizing these properties?
Yeah, definitely. So on Colorado and Supai on the backside, so it'd be the north side of Supai, we're planning on doing mini storage along that road down Colorado to the, it's an unnamed road currently. I don't think it's specified as an easement or anything, so we'll have that there, and then with the intention of putting up a steel building that's going to house retail shops as well. And the, that'll be along, that'll be along Lowell and Highway 68.
Perfect, thank you.
Other questions from Commissioners at this time? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
No one else has signed up to speak, so I'm closing the public hearing. No Commissioner has questions for staff? I'd like to entertain a motion for item four.
Make motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, first by Gillette, second by Helms, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, item four carries. Item five, Alex Bolan.
Item five is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessors parcel number 33914157 from an AR 2A agricultural residential 2-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff received one letter of concern, but it states it is not in opposition of new homes. Staff finds the application is proper for consideration, subject to standard conditions.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing, the applicant does appear to be present. Would you like to come down at this time? Name and address for the record, please.
Jeremy Brown, 6214 South Vineyard Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Thank you.
I will show my plan. Commissioner Hassett? There we go. Let me rotate that. This is the conceptual land, is it land divide? Four, approximately one acre lot with water and power right here to sell, and I do believe the, the letter, I reached out to this gentleman prior to working on this property. I'm going to go out there today. He said he wasn't opposed, and he wanted to talk to me about putting up a fence and moving water to his lot, so I'm going to go out there, meet him, listen to him, see if he has any actual concerns, and talk to him about his water situation, if there's anything we can do. But I am going to go out there today and meet him.
Thank you. Miss, there's any questions for the applicant? Nope. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michael Bobb has signed up to speak on item five.
Morning, sir. Name and address for...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, like a slob. 4310 North Canelo. I'm about to move to 5117 North Concho, so this property would actually be pretty much like right behind me. As we all know, the Engel Homes develop it, and everything is all right there. My question becomes, one, does the gentleman have any connection to the Engel Homes people? Two, how much property does he own in the area? Is this like the first step? And is the four properties, is that just for four houses? If it's just for four homes, I really don't have a problem with it. My question becomes, how many permits, rezones would a person or a company be allowed to have for profit? Are they allowed to just rezone, rezone, rezone endless properties for profit? And is it, does it make a difference between homeowners rezoning for their own thing, for their own family, for their own use? To me, rezoning for profit in a large scale just doesn't, you know, those are my questions.
Understood. Thank you very much. I think the only thing I can speak to today is this appears to be four separate one-acre lot sizes for today's subdivision, but the others I, to the best of my knowledge, based on the plans, it appears to be four, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Hassett. I would say, if I go back to pull this up, I appreciate the concerns, appreciate the question. Let me pull my, my plan here back up for this. So I own... This, I just took title on this lot. I do own another 10-acre that we're going to be talking about momentarily. I do, when I look for these, I look for opportunities of places that have great road access, water and power at the lot. I sell those to people who are going to build homes and who are looking to settle down and build, build quality homes. I've received, I'll say, conversations about people wanting to do other things, some, some even more aggressive than me with some, some other things we're doing. I've understood, I've sat through several of these meetings, talked to many residents in the area. I understand everybody's desire to keep that minimum one acre there, which is why I'm proposing this versus the AR 2A that it currently is. So I, my goal would be, although I obviously can't control what happens after close of escrow, the conversation always is about building a home and people relocating here permanently.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Yes, Commissioner Martin?
What's the water situation there? Is it well, water hole?
It would be Golden Valley Improvement District. So if I, let me pull this back up again, sorry. So we have Chinley Road right here, running east and west. Golden Valley Improvement District, water lines right there. So there's currently one water allotment for this parcel, as is. There would need to be purchased three more in addition to that one water allotment. Typically, I leave that up to the buyers. Occasionally, we'll put, we'll install water on it.
No other questions for the applicant? I'd like to say I appreciate your willingness to work with existing homeowners in the area, and I might encourage you to have a conversation outside of this meeting with Mr. Bobb to alleviate his additional concerns.
Absolutely, would be happy to.
Thank you very much. No other individuals are signed up to speak at this time, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Do the Commissioners have any questions for staff? Other than that, if not, I'd like to entertain a motion on item five.
Motion to approve for staff recommendation.
Okay, first by Martin, second by Gillette, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? None. Item five carries. Item six, Alex Bolan.
Item six is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessors parcel number 30645016B from an AR 10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff received one petition with 11 signatures in opposition. Staff finds the application is proper for consideration, subject to standard conditions.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing, will the applicant please step forward?
Jeremy Brown, 6214 South Vineyard Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Commissioner Hassett, I will share with you... Here's my conceptual land divide. We have Colorado Road here, water and power at the lot. My plan and my hope is, is to make all of these Colorado facing parcels two acres. The, the reason I'm not applying for AR 2A is in the event I need to surrender some acreage because of an easement or anything unforeseen at this point in time, although I've talked to the land surveyor, I couldn't get any, you know, there's nothing guaranteed, so if I had to surrender any usable acreage, I can make this back lot like 1.8, 1.9, whatever that would be. I did try, so if you, if you look here, these back lots to the west are all AR zoned, the ones to the east are all AR zoned, and I attempted in this design to keep it in conformity with the existing lot lines on the adjacent or other side of the street here of Colorado Road. I did do one improvement. I'm going to install water on all of these lots through Valley Pioneer. I cleared the first 50 feet facing Colorado Road here. When I, before I purchase a property, I do two personal walkthroughs, one in the morning, one at night, and I also do drone flyovers. I do a high-altitude drone flyover and then a, kind of a fast one, you could say, just to see if there's any existing animals, owls, turtles, coyotes, anything like that before I'm touching any kind of property. I'm only clearing these 50 feet, nothing else, because I can appreciate as well current residents' desire to maintain the landscape exactly as is. I just merely wanted to clean up the front, frontage of that road, make it easy to distinguish the lots, and make it easier for people to just drive right up on there if, if they so desire. I do know, so I did all that. I also had my contractor also walk through the property that day to make sure there wasn't any existing things or animals or anything that we would be disrupting as much as possible. And then as well, I had, pardon me for not getting the company exactly where I think Golden Valley Water, I had them come by right after we were done, as soon as they could get scheduled to spray that area down. I'm having them come out hopefully this week, and I'm going to have them come out again next week to just keep that, kind of mitigate as much of the dust as possible. I received and completely appreciate the letter of opposition, so I received an email from Danielle with Golden Valley Community Alliance, responded to her within minutes, gave her a really in-depth, at-length, here's why I'm here in Golden Valley, here's what I appreciate about the area, why I like to do business here. Went back and forth with her quite a bit, she was great to work with, she said she was going to relay it on, didn't have any concerns from herself. As soon as I saw the letter of opposition from Mrs. Anderson that Alex sent me, I reached out to her immediately, had about a 40-minute conversation with her, did a lot of listening to just try to alleviate any concerns. I can, coming from a small town in South Dakota, 1,200 people, I can completely understand that, so my goal was to just establish some kind of relationship with her so she could see my intention, and I hope that, you know, I would finish by saying, reached out to, made sure that everybody knew they had my cell phone, they could call me, I showed up there, I'm here today, I'm going to go out there today. Hopefully, I can, I can talk to people in person as well, happy to do that. Offered to have some breakfast this morning with any folks that wanted to talk, more than happy to sit down and see if there's any real concerns that I can, I can either communicate with or just make sure people feel heard, understood by myself. So I will say that, you know, I tried to keep this with, last thought, tried to keep, let me get that right there, there we go. Did try to keep this all within conformity so it wouldn't really look like much was happening, and again, these would be sold to people who want to build. I'm going to install the water so it's easier for them, there's power right there, I've confirmed that with... I'm gonna install the water so it's easier for them. There's power right there. I've confirmed that with Unisource, and it'll be people who wanna build a home. Is my hope.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for the applicant? Nope. Thank you very much. Uh, the two individuals have signed up to speak, Jana, Georgiana Anderson, followed by Philip Bullion. Jana, are you here? Nope. Be removing Ms. Anderson and Mr. Bullion. Oh.
Philip Bullion? Yeah, my opposition was to not rezone, was concerned about more dirt and dust. I've been all over those acres back in there and have seen it's mostly real powdered sand, and I figured that's gonna really blow as soon as they start developing, or they would have to bring in a lot more dirt to patch soil and make it livable. But, uh, also concerned about the height of any building over there that might ruin the view of the mountains from, from a distance. And, uh, just whatever road, uh, building that might be added to, uh, we have some impassable roads just east of us that are solid, whereas this material that they're gonna build on here is a lot more soft and less likely to get packed in, but, uh, that's my main concern.
I appreciate your concerns, and can I get your address for the record?
Yes, thirty-six one six North Colorado Road.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, Jana or Jana Anderson? My apologies on your first name. I'm, I'm sincerely apologetic for that.
My name's Jana Anderson. I reside at thirty-five ninety. You implying I'm short? Thirty-five ninety North Colorado Road. I come here today. I have spoken with Jeremy. I respect him for calling. Um, the thing that I'm concerned most about is I do not want any structures with common walls. Um, I originally saw that he wanted it two A, which, fine, development's good, but now I see where it's minor land, which scares me because Jeremy is an investor. He intends on selling this land once he gets it rezoned. So then that means with the way it's zoned now going to minor, whoever buys it can come in and put up how many ever units they want and however they care to build it. We wanna keep our area the same uniform as it is now. One acre per residence would be great, but two acres, the way he's got the lots, I appreciate that. But again, I reiterate, the way that it's going to be that he approached today is he's changed it from two A to minor land. And that's not good because, again, he's an investor, he's selling this, and the new property owners can come in, and we're in a deep trouble.
I understand your concerns. I'd like to turn to staff to try to alleviate that statement or that concern you have about multiple structures.
Chairman Hassett, the applicant is proposing an agricultural residential zone. Um, the way he explained it was, um, there is a minimum lot size of one acre with the agricultural residential zone, so there will be only one primary residence per parcel that he has created.
Thank you very much. Does that clarify your concern on the multiple structures?
It does. I just wanna make sure that once he sells to someone else, it's gonna stand the same way.
I understand. Well, they could change it, right? A new owner could come in and make an adjustment.
Chairman Hassett, the new owner would have to rezone the parcel first through this public hearing process.
So does that make sense? Even though he is doing the rezoning and he is selling it, a new owner could just come right back here in ninety days and do something different? Unfortunately, but that's.
Yeah. Well, then my concern, and again, I'm sorry, it's just a concern of mine, is once it's changed now, the new person stands a higher chance of getting it changed, and that puts us in a real hardship. So I just hope you'll respect the fact, we're thirty years living there. Uh, yes, we don't have money, but it is our lifestyle, and it is the way that, the only way in this economy we have to live. So we'd like to live out our rest of our lives comfortable. That's all I gotta say.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No one else has signed up to speak, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Do commissioners have questions for staff? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion on item six.
I have one thing to say.
Absolutely, Mr. Gillette.
I was just gonna say that, um, it seems to me that Mr. Brown has gone to extraordinary lengths to make sure that everybody is on the same page and is okay. I'm sure if you still have, um, grievances or fears, I'm sure he'd be more than willing to talk.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Commissioner Hubbard?
Are these, uh, parcels gonna be ready to build on, or are they just gonna be left natural? So it would be somebody else to come in and do the compaction, this, that, and the other?
I would, based on what I listened to the applicant for, I believe they're gonna remain as is, and it's up to the buyer to do their.
You know, 'cause if it's sand, uh, you can't compact it. Like he's, he said that he was gonna bring in some dirt to, so he could compact.
No, I believe he's gonna leave it as is and just sell, flip the land essentially.
Okay.
Chairman Hassett?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo has a question.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yeah, my question is kind of aimed at staff. You know, we, we have a, an applicant here who's requested, uh, rezoning, uh, one of which we've approved already on two separate parcels, ostensibly at some point creating ten parcels. Does that, does that run afoul of, of, are, are we approving something that could potentially cause some legal issues down the line, being that it's more than five parcels? Or am I just reading into this too much?
Yeah, Chairman Hassett, Commissioner Patillo, uh, that is something that we look at as we're doing, uh, staff recommendations. In this case, I mean, these are both in the Golden Valley general area, but they are not in close proximity. Uh, and so I, I don't believe this is, uh, it would qualify as a subdivision, uh, according to the land division regulations.
Okay.
No legal concern from your department. Any other questions for staff? Nope. Would like to entertain a motion on item six?
Motion to approve with staff recommendations.
Okay, we got a first by Rugi and a second by Patillo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Item six carries. Item seven, Alex Bolin.
Item seven is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessors parcel numbers three zero six, three three zero one five D, zero one five S, zero one five T, and zero one five U from an AR ten A agricultural residential ten acre minimum lot size zone and an AR agricultural residential zone to an RO, single-family residential manufactured homes prohibited zone to allow for a residential subdivision in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff has received four letters of opposition. Staff finds the application is proper for consideration subject to standard conditions.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing. Is the applicant present? Or the applicant is present? Name and address for the record, please.
Steven Robinson, five three seven three Arizona Highway sixty-eight, D seven hundred, Golden Valley eight six four one three.
Thank you very much.
This, there's four parcels involved. I'm part owner of a five acre parcel, and Diane Jemison is the owner of three, four point, one point four, five acre parcels. This is literally just west of Angle Homes Development where they built out a hundred and forty-three units, you know, residences. The range of pri, or sizes from minimum of eight thousand, but most of the lots are ninety-five hundred to twelve thousand square foot lots. It was, this was a plan developed in mid-two thousands, about twenty years ago, that was built out, and it's, it was in area zone low density where the parcel that we have is, is zoned urban development area. And the range of development goes from one to five acres, low-density residential, all the way up to heavy industrial. I chose, and my partners chose to do low-density, one to five acres, six thousand square foot minimum lots, because the original development by the, the shufflers was to put septic tanks on all those lots. The ADEQ says, nope, you have to put in sewer. So that's when they built the sewer plant, Sacramento Utilities. That plant was, is just in the process of being purchased by Cactus State Utilities. So to this, our, you know, the zoning for this is we have water, power, sewer, cable, and telephone is available at the lot. So all the necessary utilities are there. I, I would have never even thought of putting twenty-five, a two-hundred-and-fifty unit apartment complex on there because that's just, doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. But six thousand foot lots, seven to eight thousand foot per acre or per lot is a reasonable amount.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, questions for the applicant? Or, excuse me, Bradshaw, I'm sorry.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, chairperson. So, um, so question, it looks like that this is next to the Angle Home Development that are approximately the same size lots, uh, if I, if I look at it correctly. Are you planning to develop and upgrade, continue the road development and continue the same level of development as, as they did, or what, what's the intent moving forward?
Basically, it's gonna be buildable lots. The original shuffler development that Angle Homes bought about three plus years ago was they were gonna have septic tanks on them, just like the, of sixty-five lots to the east that come right up to Teddy Roosevelt. There's about sixty-three homes on those lots, and it's, they all have septic tanks. Thankfully, the ADEQ stepped in and said, nope, you have to have a sewer system, which has been approved. These lots are gonna be pos, probably smaller, 'cause when you look at the lots at ninety-five hundred square foot, there's a lot of open space where you have to either put rock down, and if you have seven, up to eight thousand foot lots, it's more manageable for the home builder to not have a bunch of land that's, you know, grows weeds and everything. So that's what we're trying to do, is just have a reasonable-sized building lot to match the character of what we have to the east.
Any other question? Oh, sorry.
Um, Mr. Robinson, it says you're trying to change this to an RO, which is manufactured homes.
No, it's no mon, manufactured. Am I correct? Yeah, it's no manufactured homes, stick-built homes.
Thank you.
Yeah. And, and the reason for it, when you look through Golden Valley, you can see dozens and dozens of abandoned manufactured homes, and all these are stick-built homes, as they call them. That's what manufactured home places call them, stick-built homes, but they're constructed from the ground up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? No, thank you very much. Um, first person signed up to speak is Jennifer Esposito. And then following behind, Terry Alumbau. Okay. Sorry.
Commissioner, board members, thank you very much. Jennifer Esposito, three two one one East Navally Avenue, Kingman, Arizona. I own about, um, slightly less than five acres in Golden Valley. Uh, not immediately in this area, but in, in the general vicinity of this area, so I'm very familiar with this area. Um, part of the problem, uh, I object to this strenuously, part of the problem that we have is the issue of sewer. Uh, there's been an ongoing question with Angle Homes about, um, alleged smell and things. Cactus uh, has not yet, to the best of my knowledge, addressed these problems. There's, um, there's no plan. Most communities, when you're talking about breaking down this kind of development, they usually require some sort of plan where they'll put a caveat on there, okay, you build the sewer system first, or the sewer system has to be approved by ADEQ to handle the additional load, or whatever that may be. And as evidenced by the, um, the other parcel from what was it, nineteen ninety, earlier in the agenda, where you rescinded because they didn't meet the requirements. So um, I, I, I think there's a real problem with, um, changing this for this proposal because the current sewer, I don't believe, can handle it. I've even spoken with the people at Cactus Utilities personally. I had about an hour-long conversation with them uh, regarding, uh, the GVID and plans they had with Angle Homes and things. And so, um, I think that, um, this is sort of putting the cart before the horse, and that, um, without a, a, an actual business plan model going forward about how to address the sewer issues and, and whatnot, um, I think that this should be denied at this time because, uh, it is, it is an issue that is unresolved with the current situation, and this does, um, come up against, you know, while it may be similar to the land division that Angle has done, you know, you're also talking about undeveloped roads. I mean, Angle, I've been over there where the Angle Homes are many, many times. You know, you're talking about paved roads, you're talking about improvements, and I don't see this in this plan. Thank you.
Carrie?
Hello, my name's Carrie Alumbau. Um, I just wanted to say.
May I have your, I'm sorry, may I have your address for the record?
Uh, I'm at two eight oh four Chambers Avenue in Kingman, Arizona.
Thank you.
Um, and, and I, this is just on a personal thing. Uh, it would improve the area as far as market values, but that's neither here nor there. Uh, five years ago, I moved here, and I went out to Golden Valley. That's where I wanted to move to, and uh, I couldn't find anything but manufactured homes on five acres or whatever. There, there wasn't enough. And I'm older, I have physical disabilities where I cannot maintain acreage, and I was trying to find a home that would be suitable for me, you know, uh, I just didn't want to have to maintain such a big piece of property. And, 'cause it's a pain in the butt for me, I can't do it, and it costs a lot of money for, to hire people to do it. So I just wanted to let you know that in, in my opinion, I think that this is very proper with, if you're looking at the Angle Homes versus the, the lots that he's doing, um, I think that it would be very beneficial to people like me. Okay?
Thank you. Gordon Morris?
Chair Commissioners, good morning. Name's Gordon Morris, forty-two fifty-eight North Concho Road, Golden Valley. Uh, anything less than one acre is not the value that Golden Valley stands for. We have the Angle Homes there now. We need to keep it within a mile of sixty-eight if we're gonna go to smaller properties. Um, we don't need the traffic through the community that this stuff creates. When I bought, when my family bought in nineteen fifty-nine in that valley, it was two acre. We allowed one acre. Now we're going to something. No, we would need more houses. We need to divide some properties, this one included, and, uh, we need to bring the people from the city and let them enjoy the county, not bring the city with them to another city. We are rural. We need to keep it that way, please. We are rural, we need to keep it that way, please. Any questions?
Thank you. Oh, no, we, no questions, but I appreciate it.
Thank you, and thank for your time.
Thank you. Closing the public hearing, uh, do Commissioners have questions for staff?
Please.
Okay.
I actually have a question for the applicant as well.
You have a question for the applicant? Okay, reopening the public hearing, if you would come down, Commissioner Bradshaw?
I'll take your question first, Mr. Bradshaw.
Right, thank you, thank you. Um, so, this is roughly 10 acres, um, 6,000 square foot lots, that puts it north of 60 units. That kind of concerns me for this area. Um, I'm looking at the other areas, all the other lots are, are roughly 10,000 square foot lots. Way more comfortable with a 10,000 square foot lot than a 6,000 square foot lot in this area. And I understand your, your point, but then I'm looking at Angle Homes subdivision, they're sold out. A 10,000 square foot house-
My apologies. If there's any side conversations, I would encourage you to take them outside of the auditorium during the meeting. Thank you. Go ahead.
Nope, thank you, thank you. So, I, I, I'm hesitant to say that, you know, 6,000 square foot lots is, is a value add to this area. Um, and I understand you're, you're going to have to do all the development, the sewer water, asphalt, because you can't do a 6,000, 6,000 square foot lot on dirt. But even then, it seems like 10,000 square foot lots makes more sense for this region. That's what's there, that's what's in, that's, 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 all of the other lots in this area are, are at least 10,000.
The re, and we have up north, and I thank you for your, your concern, Mr. Bradshaw. As I stated earlier, this is urban development area, and literally all of that area that's urban development could be zoned much higher density. And in fact, if you go back and look at what Angle Homes tried to do up north, they were looking at of 12 to 20, you know, up to 12 units per acre because of the, of providing affordable housing. So, the only reason there hasn't been more development like what I'm proposing is because there's been a, of, a lack of sewer system. This is the only sewer system in the valley right now. And to that point, Cactus State Utilities is purchasing, it was approved in June, they're going to be spending money. The, the amount of potential for that development of, for that sewer system is to reach the equivalent of 2,500 homes or 2,500 dwelling units. If you look at the corridor, and this is in the one-mile corridor from north to south, choosing the lowest density, you know, and it could be as little as four or three parcels per acre, which would be closer to 10,000. But to restrict a developer, a builder, to those, because I guarantee you, if Angle had bought that development before it was ever subdivided in 2004 to 8, the home sizes, the slot sizes would have been much smaller, they'd have been in the 6,000 to 8,000-foot range, like we're proposing now. So, I'm trying to fit, keep it reasonable, especially since it's in this urban corridor, and there's, you know, so it's just trying to do what's good for the neigh, for the people. I'd love to have more people come in. And I want to put a map on here, and I'll tell you where this map came from. Okay, yeah, this was the, in the 2002 area plan for Golden Valley. Notice all the yellow in this area plan. That's all urban development area, which allows that wide range of development. And that's what the plan showed in 2002. I don't know why it changed to this by 2015, where it's all zoned, or not zoned, but it's designated as suburban development. Now, where I came from, suburban meant 6,000 to 8,000-foot lots, it didn't mean of multiplexes, it did not mean of apartment complexes, it meant single-family residences. But they call suburban of one to five acres. But the first area was, the first plan for, that was approved in 1980, and then updated in exactly 22 day, 22 years ago today, was this plan, which a lot, with a lot more urban development area. And what I'm trying to do is keep it within a reasonable amount. I'm not saying there's going to be 6,000-foot lots, because first off, that's about six lots per acre, you know, you know, when you, even after taking off the road. I want to see, my ideal lot size is seven, 7,500. And if, if I'm the one that ends up doing the development, you know, getting it subdivided, and all the questions that Ms. Esposito addressed about a plan, happens after you get it rezoned. You don't build a plan before you have the rezone, because it costs lots of money to do a subdivision.
Thank you. Do you have a follow-up question?
I do. Uh, so, and I, and I appreciate all that, all that you, uh, you mentioned there. And I agree with you that the zoning is, is how you move forward with your, with the future project. So, I'm not, I don't, but it still, still, it still bothers me that every, all the other lots in this area are 10,000 square feet minimum. And I'm looking at this plan, just running through this in my mind, and with 10,000 square foot lots, you're still north of 30. And so, I, I get really uncomfortable saying that we should go higher density than what is sitting next to it. Um, and I know, I, I get your, your point, um, suburban development in everywhere else is multifamily. This is not everywhere else, this is here in Mojave County, this is, 10,000 square feet is a pretty dense development.
And I understand what you're saying, Mr. Bradshaw. The flexibility is what we're looking for. And remember, as I said, this development was first platted out in late 90s, early 2000s, with the intention of putting in septic tanks. Thank God that did not happen. It did happen on the parcels to the east, between Brook and, uh, Hershey. Those are all have septic tanks. And we know that the problem is up in North Kingman, the new Kingman Butler Edition, where they're on 6,000-foot lots. The only reason I would even propose what we're doing now is because we have sewer right there, water, power, and I can guarantee you, there's not going to be 6,000-foot lots if I have anything to do with it, because it just doesn't fit. 7,000 is more reasonable. I can show you pictures from homes in the area that are on these 10,000, 9,500-foot lots, and there's a lot of, you know, weeds in some of the homes, because it's just too much for a single homeowner to maintain. 7,000-foot lot, I, I lived in Oregon on a 5,000-foot lot, and I'm going, I step out the door and I'm in the neighbor's yard. So I, I understand what you're saying. I am a reasonable person, I think about the neighbors, and I want us to have that. So the only reason it's 6,000 and not 8,000, like all those were, those were minimum of 8,000 zoned, was this gives a little bit more flexibility, because if we can only put in 6,700-foot lots and it's zoned 8,000, we're in trouble.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robinson.
So, can I, can I continue?
Sure.
I just want, so, and I, I understand your point, and this is still my concern, is because I know what kind of a product you have to build on a 6,000 square foot house or lot. And they have five-foot, 10-foot setbacks, and they're, they're more or less multifamily, they're not multifamily, but, and it concerns me for, for this neighborhood, and I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, and I understand that, and that's why I said they won't be smaller than 6,700 to 7,000, to 7,000.
Thank you. Do Commissioners have any other questions for the applicant? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to, thank you, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do Commissioners have questions for staff? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion on item seven. Okay, um, I would like to entertain a revised motion.
And I, I would like to revise it if possible, uh, and if the applicant's amenable, and I don't know if they are, uh, would you be, be amenable to 35 maximum units? That would roughly get in that realm of the 10,000 square foot lots.
What, what's, what's, did you say? I didn't hear you.
Would you be, would you be interested in, in entertaining an option where there was a maximum of 35 to 40 units here, instead of the possible 60?
Oh, well, it-
Because we can give-
I would easily say 40, that, 40 units max for the 10 acres, that's four units, 45, that's what I was thinking.
That's quarter-acre lots, that's, I would, I would be willing to make that move.
If you add the, if you add the suggestion that no more than 40 parcels, I, I would be happy with that on the 10 acres.
Well, it gets you just barely under 10,000, 10,000 square feet, uh, which, which, again, I, I, I think it's value, but, value add for the neighborhood. I think the, uh, the lot sizes are right in realm of what is in the neighborhood, and I would be comfortable with that.
Okay.
I would be uncomfortable saying you could have 6,000, 60, 60 lots. So-
Possible to put a limit on the number of lot.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, absolutely, you guys can put a condition on the resolution for limiting how many lots or lot size as well, if you wanted.
And, and I understand that you have to get this through this, the sewer and the water, uh, for the actual number of units that you can, that are, that you can actually introduce, so. But, I, I will, as soon as, as soon as it's available, because I would like to- Well, I would, I would like to move that we, uh, adopt, approve number, what is it, number-
Seven.
Seven, with the condition that there is a maximum of 40 units available for this, these, this set of parcels.
Satisfy legal requirement.
Set.
Why is both?
Second.
Why is it basic? Seven.
Forty. Forty, forty units.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Close. None. Push. Item number eight is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 30624052, from an AR 10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 6A agricultural residential 6-acre minimum lot size zone, and an AR 3A agricultural residential 3-acre minimum lot size zone, to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. Uh, staff finds that the application is proper for consideration, subject to the standard conditions. Opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Closing the public- I'm closing the public hearing. Do any Commissioners have questions for staff? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve with standard-
Well, second.
Okay, first by Gillette, second by Helms, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Item nine, Matthew Gunderson.
Item nine is an evaluation of a request for a special use permit for assessor's parcel number 24309004, to allow for an automated water fill station in an A general zone in the Dolan Springs vicinity. Uh, section 37A of the Mojave County Zoning Ordinance states that a permanent public facility is allowed in any zone with a special use permit. Staff finds that the application is proper for consideration, subject to the standard conditions.
Okay, thank you. Opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Okay, no one else has signed up to speak at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing. Do Commissioners have questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, like to entertain a motion for item nine.
I move it.
Motion to approve first.
Well, second.
First by Martin, second by Bradshaw, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Unopposed, item carries. Item 10, Alex Boland.
Item 10 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 24309004, from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone, to an AR 8A agricultural residential 8-acre minimum lot size zone, to allow for a minor land division in the Yucca vicinity. Staff finds the application is proper for consideration, subject to standard conditions.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Yes, you wish to speak at this time? Or do any Commissioners have questions for the applicants? Okay, no one, no, no one else has signed up to speak on this item, so I'm closing the public hearing, unless Commissioners have questions for staff, I'd like to entertain a motion on item 10.
Take a motion to approve with standard-
Okay, first by Gillette, second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, unopposed, item 10 passes. Item 11, Melanie Stradling.
Item 11 is an evaluation of a request to rename a road in Golden Shores Unit 8, a subdivision located east of Oatman Highway in Section 11, County 16, uh, Range 21 West from El Mirage Place to El Mirage Drive in the Topoc vicinity. Uh, the 1962 plat for Golden Shores Unit 8 details a T-intersection on the north end of Yavapai Place, with, uh, El Mirage Place to the west and El Mirage Drive to the east. Both roads have the same directional and a continuous street number range. Uh, Block B thereby has an adjacent lots where one should have a place suffix and the other a drive. The confusing layout has resulted in previous addressing coordinators assigning addresses using only the drive suffix. Officially eliminating the place suffix and continuing the El Mirage Drive alignment would be consistent with established area addressing, and would allow public work to correct the posted signage. Staff finds that the, um, application is proper for consideration, subject to the-
Thank you very much. There's no one signed up to speak, so do Commissioners have any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. Oh, I'm sorry.
So, was this a request by staff then, to do this renaming?
Uh, Chairperson has it, uh, Chairman, uh, Rugi, yes, that is correct.
Okay. Um, I'd like to entertain a motion for item 11.
Motion to approve.
First, second, that, Martin, second by Rugi, all in favor?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Hearing none, item 11 passes. Item 12, Matthew Gunderson.
Item number 12 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 20435220, from an RO 1A, single-family residential, manufactured homes prohibited, 1-acre minimum lot size zone, to an RE 1A, residential recreation, 1-acre minimum lot size zone, uh, to allow for the residential recreation uses in the Pine Lake vicinity. Uh, just to clarify, so, uh, some of the allowed uses in the RE zone that would not be allowed in the RO 1A zone would be, you would be able to have a manufactured home, it would also allow you to build an accessory structure prior to a primary structure being built. Uh, staff finds that the application is proper for consideration, with the standard conditions.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing, is the applicant present?
My name is Robert Jones, my address is 2554 East Myra Street, Fort Mojave, Arizona, 86426. And, uh, as Mr. Gunderson explained, I'm requesting the change from RO to RE. If you look at this, is it right side up? There's four RO, uh, lots right in the center of about 75 to 80 RE lots, it's up on the Walupai Mountain, near the Walupai Mountain Resort and Restaurant. And most of this, uh, acre lot, approximately acre, is unbuiltable, it's a very deep ravine. And as we've heard before here, uh, RO is normally applied to urban development within the city, within the village, developer comes in, lays off the Creosote and the Yuccas, and- Developer comes in, lays off the Creosote and the Yuccas and sets up the utilities and then builds cookie cutter houses uh, in the two hundred to four hundred thousand dollar range. But R O or R E is, um, like the rest of the, most of the development up there on the Walupi Mountain is for uh, residential parcels primarily located in areas where topographic features that may require flexibility for placement of structures and to allow a non-commercial guest house or secondary residence. What you can see from the pictures that Mr. Gunderson showed earlier, there's, uh, uh, a lot of topographical uh, features in the Walupi Mountain area. There's boulders about the size of, uh, a Volkswagen bug. There's, uh, ponderosa pines that are anywhere through up to a hundred and twenty-five, thirty feet tall. So there's a lot of obstacles. Now, Mr. Gunderson forwarded to me one letter of opposition from a neighbor, Mr. and Mrs. Larson. I don't believe they're here today. See them. Uh, but, uh, their concern was that I might put a, uh, mobile home on the property and that would lessen uh, the property value. I agree totally with him. Uh, and I have no intent to put a mobile home there.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Nope. Okay. Uh, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the time.
There are two individuals. Oh, well, actually one's the applicant. So, uh, one individual signed up to speak, Gary Osterberg.
Gary Osterberg, and I live at forty-five forty Walupi Drive. Um, I'm one of the adjacent lots to the proposed, uh, change in the zoning. And there's two beautiful homes on each side of that lot. And I feel that the property values are going to very go down very, uh, substantially if we let this zoning happen. It was always set up for those three lots to be residential lots and no, no, uh, and all stick built homes. And, uh, I took a survey around and anybody that's got a stick built home does not want this to change because of the property values are going to drop. And I just out of curiosity, I've never been to a zoning, a zoning change. And who are these? These are all legal?
They're county staff.
Okay. They're county staff or is any of these, uh, attorneys?
Uh, well, you might not want to raise your hand all the time on that answer, but yes, one of them is.
Okay. I was just kind of curious. Okay. Uh, that's, uh, my plea to the, uh, not to change this, uh, not to change that. In fact, the, uh, original owners of that property, I gave them, uh, a irrevocable waiver for them to put their, uh, if they had to put a reserve septic in, I gave them that property on, on my land. And I always thought it would be R O. And now everybody, now these original, or the original owners were going to build a stick built when he passed away. And then John got it and, or Robert got it. And, uh, now they want to change it.
And your cons, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off, but your concern basically is a manufactured home being put on the struc, on the land.
Definitely.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Any, uh, follow-up questions for the applicant? There's no one else signed up to speak. If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. If there's questions for staff.
I do. Didn't he, uh, state that he's not going to put a-
You're correct, sir. Yes.
Trailer on there. Okay. So it's his intent or stick house?
I'm assuming your intent is to build a stick built home, single family.
Uh, I'd like the flexibility of putting either a manufactured home or a stick built home.
You just said you're not putting in a manufactured home though.
Say again?
I believe you just made a statement on your, when you first spoke that you were not doing a manufacturing.
Mobile home. There was the, uh, um, email that Mr. Gunderson sent, said the other neighbor was concerned that I might put a mobile home there. Uh, mobile home to me is, you know, twelve, fourteen foot wide, sixty, seventy foot long. You can't even drag one into that property because the dirt road is nine and a half feet wide. And, uh, the other, uh, concern the other neighbor had was that if I were to put a manufactured home there, it would reduce the, uh, uh, pricing of neighboring homes. However, he's on an R E as long as seventy-seven others. I'm not sure anybody here, uh, knows why those four lots in the center of, uh, the middle of the Walupi Mountain development is R O. It raised the question in my mind. Uh, does anybody here know why it's R O? I, I'm, I have an answer, but, uh, if, if you want to listen to her answer, it's fine with me. I'd be curious, you know?
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Yeah, I'd be curious.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, you are allowed to speak. Robert, thank you very much for your statement. I appreciate that. Name and address for the record, please.
Cheryl Smith, forty-two forty-five North Shadow Road, Kingman, Arizona, eight six four oh nine. And I also put in a request to not, um, have this approved. And he was asking about the zoning. What has happened is you've had property owners that have been there for a long time and people have died off. And then it gets to other people and then you've got the rezones. So that's why that was originally, all that whole area has stick built homes around that. And so the original property owners that had that and why it was zoned, R O was for a stick built home. The, uh, what I object to is the county has spent thousands of dollars, thousands and thousands of dollars putting up areas where they can bring in a motor home where they can do lots of things up there. And that property, what he's wanting to do is probably bring a motor home and put it in there around all of these homes. They're still stick built homes. It also allows them to put up a forty thousand or a forty feet high antenna. That's a wide open thing. It's not just about homes. When you look at that rezone, there's a lot there to that rezone. And if you read all the way through that, that's why all these property owners that have stick built homes oppose it. Because there's plenty of room. The lodge has places where they can put their motor homes. The county has put where they can put all these motor homes in, and that's our biggest concern.
Thank you very much. Just for clarification purposes, ma'am, did you fill one of these out to speak?
I did not.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. I don't think that's necessary unless commissioners have questions or you would like to entertain the comment.
I, I would like to hear comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please. Are you okay?
Well, it did seem strange to me that four lots in the middle of the entire area, uh, that was zone R E became R O. The story that I heard and I understand is that that area, when it was divided up into that five acre plot, but divided up into four lots. Uh, there was some concern by the area residents, and I understand their concern, that some corporate entity was going to buy that. And the little bit of buildable area that they had that wasn't the big ravine was going to be used for an R V park. Anybody would not want an R V park right next to their lodging. And that's understandable. So they lobbied to, uh, zone those lots to, uh, R O so that they would definitely be, uh, uh, a stick built home there, which is no big problem. But you wouldn't want an R V park, uh, right there. So that was the reason that I was told. I have no idea whether it's true or not. And I agree with the neighbors that, you know, putting a, a dwelling there that makes sense, makes sense. I don't have a motor home that I plan on putting there. I don't know where the idea of a mobile home or a motor home came from.
I think it's predicated on the fact that a zoning change would allow for you to have the flexibility to do any of those set items such as a forty foot antenna or whatever. But I think that that's where that statement came from.
And I'm not a ham operator, so I wouldn't have a forty foot antenna, but, um, yeah, that makes sense. I, uh, I, I plan on a stick built, but I'd like the flexibility if I want to put in a, uh, site-built, uh, uh, factory home or a manufactured home with a trex deck all the way around, like you, you wouldn't see the house anyway. But in any case, I don't plan on putting a shabby little shack, uh, there. I also don't within R O have the possibility of putting in a, a non-commercial guest house. I might want to over four or five years, put a little casita out there for relatives when they come for overflow from my, uh, my own cabin.
Thank you. I believe, yeah, did you have a question? Somebody did. Commissioner Helms?
I'm just curious, what, if I'm understanding the zoning correctly and you're saying what you're saying, what is the main intention to rezone it then? Cause you could essentially do what you want to do with your current zoning, could you not?
Say the last part again, you faded away.
You could essentially do what you want to do with your current zoning as it sits right now. Like, why are you playing?
No, the current zoning, as Mr. Gunderson or somebody in the, in the staff explained earlier, I believe, was that R O requires a stick built home on site. Cannot have a manufactured or a site-built factory home with R O. You've got to have the concrete slab, put on the angle home and you got it. You look at the homes, and I showed you the map earlier. If you looked at the homes and all of these seventy-seven adjacent, um, lots, many of them are, uh, stick built, many of them are A frames, many of them are small, many of them are large, many of them are, uh, manufactured homes. Over the years, they've had a nice track porch, probably it is like an Arizona room. Just want the same flexibility that the rest of the neighbors had. And Gary's my neighbor on a property line. We, we have a boundary. And I appreciate the previous owners, uh, and Gary, uh, had an agreement, irrevocable to extend the leach field another twenty-five feet or whatever.
I believe, uh-
Allow that to happen.
Thank you. Commissioner Bradshaw, did you have a question?
It, it was much the same. So.
Okay. Okay. Say again? I'm sorry, but my ears-
He's asking if your intent is to build manufacturer, that's why you're doing the rezone. If you're not-
I've got, uh, I live in Fort Mojave, you know, in a home, uh, markets for a little over four hundred K. I've got a, a home in Norman, Oklahoma. Markets for just under three hundred K. I've actually got one of the, uh, manufactured homes that's right across the road from my lot. I own that one up there as well. It's a manufactured home. There's eleven of them.
I'm going to pause you really quick. Commissioner Gillette?
Um, I was just going to say that I have seen some really beautiful manufactured homes.
Sure.
Um, but what bothers me about this is it allows you to put a mobile, um, mobile home.
It does. It doesn't say mobile home on the R E. Not that I want to. And I would sign a waiver or whatever, a, uh, deposition or, you know, a guarantee that I will not, I will not put a mobile home on the lot. Uh, I'd have to helicopter it in. Like I mentioned, a mobile home is twelve to fourteen foot wide, sixty to seventy foot long. And the road up there is nine and a half feet where your wheels go. You can get an eleven foot wide, uh, manufactured home up there.
The bit larger ones come in two sec-
Two sections, but they're both twelve foot wide. You get twenty-four foot normally when you, uh, about the narrowest you can get is eleven. Cause I've got a manufactured home up there. It's called a park model, actually.
May I inquire something? I'm just curious. If you're not ready to build and you haven't committed to a structure, anything at this time, and you are just doing this purely on the flexibility, why would you not wait to do the rezoning when you've committed to exactly what it is that you want to put on the structure, on the land?
Well, right now I'm gathering the money. I used to have a forty foot motor home, sold it for a hundred and fifty K, you know, like three, four months ago.
You understand my, my, I guess, I guess I'm leaning into something that your concerns of your, the others that have spoken are, are the fact that you have the possibility to put-
The other gentleman, I'm new to, uh, zoning.
Uh huh.
In a way. And, uh, I didn't know how long this was going to take. I know I can't start building this year because, you know, winter weather coming.
Well, you also don't know what you want to build yet, right? Okay.
And my, my timeline is, okay, next summer I will have the money available. Cause I usually don't get a mortgage. I usually gather money and, uh, get that two, three hundred thousand, whatever I need.
So.
I've already got the lot and the sewers and the power and the water, the well. So now it's a structure. And, uh, to answer your question directly, I, it's just, in my, uh, working life, I'm retired now. I was in planning and requirements, uh, for a company. And I know how long the bureaucracy takes sometimes to get things done. Well, I don't know how long. Might take me six, eight months to get-
Pretty quick here in Mojave County.
So that's why. Yeah. Well, that's good. Uh, and if I got it, uh, adjudicated now, that'd be fine. I can start anytime, but you know, like I say, winter is coming, so I probably won't start until next summer at the earliest. So I just like to get it. I don't like to leave anything, you know, that's going to bite me later. I'd like to just get ahead of the power.
Are there any other questions for the applicant, Commissioner Hubbard?
So if it, okay, we changed, uh, his zoning. And when he goes to build, he has to go through another process, right? I mean, he can't-
Well, I've got to get it. Oh, I'm sorry. I got to get it approved, I'm sure, whatever my plans are.
When he determines what he wants to build, that would be phase two.
So he has to go through this, again, he can't just-
Well, I think the zoning change would be completed, correct? He just wants the flexibility to choose.
That anymore.
Correct.
That's what I'm asking. Yeah.
That would be a Matthew Gunderson question.
Yeah. Chairman Hattson, Commissioner Hubbard, so the zoning change would allow for the, the various uses. Once the zoning is approved and he chose what he wanted to build, the next step would be applying for building permits. Those would not have to come to the commission and the board for approval. Uh, that would go through development services and, uh, would be administratively approved once it was determined that what they're looking to build meets all of our codes and regulations.
Uh, Mr. Chair? I may add, uh, just some clarification on the manufactured home versus a mobile home. Uh, in the county's eyes, they're almost one in the same. Um, we look at, uh, and I think in, in some of our older, uh, ordinances and definitions, we use mobile home for pre nineteen seventy-six, um, manufactured homes. Those were considered mobile homes. Uh, we do not allow for pre nineteen seventy-six manufactured homes to come into the county anymore. Uh, because that was prior to the HUD requirements. Um, so our only requirement, when we look at a manufactured home, whether it's called a mobile home, manufactured home, we look, is it past that nineteen seventy-six date? And I think it's July. Um, and if, if so, then they can permit it and install it, uh, in this R E zone. But mobile home versus manufactured home, it's, to us, it's the same. It's just what, what's that date? Just to, just to give that clarification.
Thank you.
Chairman Hattson, Commissioner Patillo has a question.
Commissioner Patillo?
Yeah, I just kind of more an observation. Um, you know, I'm very, very, very familiar with that area up there. Having spent, uh, the majority of my childhood camping up there with family, uh, family having houses and lots up there. And right off the top of my head, I can name you four different mobile homes up there within less than a mile of this, this house or this proposed rezone. And just down the street, there's a, uh, and I'm probably, uh, splitting hairs here, but for lack of a better term, I'm going to call it an R V park, a mobile home park where they have, uh, park models and R Vs. And, um, for us to entertain not allowing him the same, I think, not necessarily an R V park, but he just wants to kind of change the zoning to provide a little more flexibility. I think that it, uh, uh, is incumbent upon us to at least seriously consider allowing him what he's requesting.
Thank you very much.
I think what he was referring to is actually one of the park models that I own. To my understanding, twenty-ten to twenty-thirteen, somewhere in there, it was a, a ten-unit, uh, R Vs. You could pull your trailer up there and park it and, uh, resort, you know, charge you a fee like a normal R V park. They cleared all those out. They put in eleven park models. Uh, their cabins, they got green tin roofs, they got-
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you very much. Is there any other questions for-
Very nice.
I'm sorry. Hold on. Commissioner Patillo, I missed that.
I'm, I'm, I'm good. I was just concurring with him.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I can make one more clarification as well. As far as the zoning on these four parcels, we did look it up. Uh, it looks like everything in the area was rezoned back in nineteen, nineteen sixty-eight that received that R E zone. Um, and two thousand and four is when these four parcels were rezoned. We looked through the, the resolution and it looks like there's, they didn't give any reasoning of why they wanted to go to R O in that resolution. So it's, it's not something that we know of, but everything was, had that R E zone in sixty-eight. And then two thousand and four is when they rezoned these specific parcels.
Prior to building a single family residential stick built home surrounded by mobile zoning. Um, I think at this point, unless there's any specific questions from commissioners, I'm going to close the public hearing. Nothing? Okay. I'm closing the public hearing. Do commissioners have any questions for staff? Okay. Hearing none. I'd like to entertain a motion for item twelve.
I move to approve with the, uh, conditions.
Okay. Motion by- Okay, motion by Patillo, second by Martin. Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. So, oh, I, my, sorry. I just assumed. Uh, Patillo, your motion was to approve?
My motion is to approve with staff recommendations.
Okay, we have a first. We have a second by Hubbard. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Have to do a roll call on that one.
Commissioner Hubbard? Commissioner Bradshaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Helms?
Aye.
Commissioner Barlow? Commissioner Morse?
Aye.
Chairman Hassett?
Aye.
Iceman Gillette?
Aye.
Commissioner Patillo?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Nay.
Commissioner Rugi?
Aye.
We have three, four nays and six ayes.
Motion carries. Item 12, motion carries. Item 13, Alex Boland.
Item 13 is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel number 33343077 from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 5A agricultural residential 5-acre minimum lot size zone to allow for a minor land division in the Valley Vista vicinity. Staff finds the application is proper for consideration subject to standard conditions.
Thank you. Opening the public hearing, is the applicant present? Okay, and no one else is signed up to speak, so I'm closing the public hearing. Is there any questions from commissioners to staff? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion on item 13.
I move that we approve item 13 with staff recommendations.
First by Bradshaw, second?
Second.
Helms? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, Alex Boland.
Item 14 is an evaluation of a request for an extension of time for a special use permit for assessor's parcel numbers 31027004 and 31027005 to allow for the completion of the conditions of BOS Resolution 2022-210, which approved a 4H rodeo and motorsports arena in an AR 10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size zone in the Kingman vicinity. Staff finds the application is proper for consideration with a new expiration date of December 5th, 2025.
Thank you. Applicant? Oh, I'm opening the public hearing. Applicant's present. Come on down. Sorry.
Good morning, Honorable Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Kathy Tackett Hicks and I'm acting as the owner's agent. I just wanted to let you know that the reason for the request for an extension is that the commercial site plan is not committed, is not completed. We, it has been submitted twice. We have a few remaining comments. Should get it wrapped up, but an extension of time was necessary to get that condition of approval completed. Do you have any questions? I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Questions from commissioners? The applicant?
So this is the first extension that's come.
Yes, correct.
What was it? When did that project start?
I don't know. I was just brought onto it a few months ago. The initial SUP was processed probably about 15 months ago. I can't remember the date. So it's fairly recent. I know they've, they've got some tracks created out there. I do know that. But commercial site plan has to be completed.
Any other questions from commissioners? Nope, thank you. Close the public hearing. Commissioners have any questions for staff? If not, I'd like to entertain a motion on item 14. First by Gillette, second by Martin. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15, Commissioners' comments.
Just a real quick comment by me.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate the staff's work and efforts on this, on this updated language in the packet. And then the ability to look at supporting document has been super helpful. Thank you.
Any other commissioners' comments? I'm not laughing at you. I'm laughing at me. Um, okay, item 16, Call the Public. Anyone like to speak? Name, address for the record.
I'll remember next time. Steve Robinson, 5373, US, or State Highway 68, D 700, Golden Valley, Arizona. I, that first six items, the vision came from the 2002 area plan. And a lot of people that have moved into the area in the last of five years, they wanted to stay rural. But the original area plan was created in 1980. My parents and my dad's family didn't start moving here until the year of 201985. But those five points, guard individuals' property rights, obtain reasonable development density, look for support. They all, I had four people opposed, five people opposed. Four of them don't even live near the house and I thought the gal that was, has a house right next to it, she has a 10,500-foot lot. But this, my concern is that for Golden Valley, and that's why I'll put this back up, all the green, the light green in Golden Valley are the areas that were cut up into two and a half acres 65 years ago by Hollywood Land Company. The yellow areas were those areas that were not cut up. And those are the areas that were originally zoned or originally planned for urban development. Now, I certainly don't want to see of high-density apartment complexes even on Highway 68. I don't want to see, except for senior housing, that's the one I would like. But my, five of you are going to be on the, the subcommittee looking at the general plan. Golden Valley is unique because it, and Yucca is unique because it has these cut up where they didn't put any roads, didn't put any power. And they, no, there's no water available. You have to drill wells. That was unfair to the people that bought these lots 10, 20, 30, 40 years ago. And they can't do anything with them because there's no water, power, sewer. A lot of the lots in the main part of Golden Valley, oh, you're going to take away my time. But there's so much I want you to look at as the committee that does this to really focus on Golden Valley having the need for development, but protecting those two and a half to one and a quarter acre parcels. So, because there's some of them that are zoned urban density now.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the supporting documentation. No other individuals like to speak on Call to the Public? Seeing and hearing none. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn. First by Bradshaw, second by Rugi. All in favor? Okay. Meeting adjourned.